Check, check.
One.
Ah, we're good to go. All right. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. As the board had the opportunity to read the amendments from the Board of Alderman Meeting, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, special meeting, and the bills list May first, two thousand and twenty-five. Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Moreau, saw those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, consent agenda has been approved. We have a couple of proclamations tonight, so I'll be reading those. The first is a proclamation, the Police Officers Memorial Day, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and National Police Week, May twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. The members of the Osage Beach Department play an essential part in safeguarding the roles and freedoms of Osage Beach. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception in the week against oppression. The men and women of the Osage Beach Police Department increasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Michael Harmison, Mayor of Osage Beach, call upon the citizens of patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May twelfth through May eighteenth as National Police Week in Osage Beach, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. I further call upon the citizens of Osage Beach to observe May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Osage Beach to be affixed this first day of May, two thousand and twenty-five. Our second proclamation is Local Government Week, May fourth through the tenth. Whereas, local governments in Missouri make important decisions that affect the lives of all Missourians. Local governments are the level of government closest to the people, and local governments include city councils, county commission, school boards, among others. Local governments are the unique, ultimate expression of grassroots democracy, and local governments play an essential role in the quality of life in Missouri communities. Now therefore, I, Michael Harmison, Mayor of the City of Osage Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of May fourth through the tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Local Government Week. In the City of Osage Beach, and I urge all Missourians to join me in recognizing local governments as they serve their communities. All right, we're gonna move on to unfinished business. First item is Bill twenty-five dash twenty-eight. It's an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Osage Beach Scout Troop Number One Eighteen to manage and staff the Osage Beach City Park Concessions Stand for two thousand and twenty-five season. This is a second reading. Parks and Recreation Manager, Eric Gregory.
I have nothing else to add, Mr. Mayor, and do recommend approval.
Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
So move.
Alderman Roche, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rucker, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella?
All right, Bill twenty-five dash twenty-eight passes second reading. Next, we have Bill twenty-five dash thirty-one. An ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the expenditure of funds for promotion efforts to support the Lake of the Ozarks Bike Fest two thousand and twenty-five A event, for an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars. City Administrator, Devon Lake.
I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
No comments and questions. Do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Osteen, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Barrella? Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
All right, second reading, twenty-five dash thirty-one passes. Next item, we have Bill twenty-five dash thirty-two. An ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a credit card processing agreement with World Fuel for Lee C. Fine in Grand Gaze Airport. Second reading, Titan still not here, you gonna take?
I'll take that for him.
Okay, April.
Uh, yes, Mayor, members of the board, this is like what Ty said last time, just to bring the airport out of the dark ages as it pertains to, um, credit card processing. So I can answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any comments or questions? Alderman Hoffman?
Could you define dark ages for us?
I mean, what year were you born?
I recall my question.
Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Moreau, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella?
All right, Bill twenty-five dash thirty-two passes second reading. Next item, we have Bill twenty-five dash point three-three. An ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter one thirty-five budget and financial in general, adding section one three-five point zero two one, accepting payment. City Administrator, Devon Lake.
I'm taking over for Cole this evening, since he's not here. But this ordinance has a floor amendment that has been added to reflect the changes that were requested at the previous meeting, which was to put this responsibility on the city administrator, um, so that for, I, there will need to be a vote, correct Tara, on the floor amendment?
Correct.
Um, to make these changes effective before the approval of the second reading. So we'll need a motion and a second for the floor amendment, and then a motion and a second for the second reading passage.
Correct.
Any comments or questions on the amendment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the amendment?
Motion to approve the amendment.
Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, do we need a roll call on that one also? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seeing none. Next, we have, do we have any comments or questions on the bill itself with the amendment? Seeing then, do I have a motion to approve the second reading as amended?
So move.
Alderman Moreau, do I have a second?
Second.
What's your name again? Alderman Collins, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella?
All right, Bill twenty-five dash thirty-three passes as amended. Next, we have Bill twenty-five dash thirty-five. An ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter two hundred, Police Department, Section two hundred point zero four zero, powers and duties of Chief of Police as set forth. You can take this one also, Devon?
I will. Uh, this is the ordinance that Cole had brought at the last meeting to allow chief to sign MOUs, uh, to keep these kinds of things off of the agenda and out of your guys' hair. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
There's no comments or questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve second amendment. Second reading, excuse me.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella? Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
All right, second reading passes. And for those that might be out in the crowd, or those at home, it normally does not go like this. We had quite a large agenda last week, first reading, and, uh, that's where we basically read them, approve them, talk about them, so tonight's gone rather quickly because they were approved two weeks ago, so it's just kind of unusual. It's not the way it always happens, it's just FYI. Next, we have Bill twenty-five dash thirty-six. An ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-four point ninety-three, adopting the two thousand and twenty-five annual budget, transfer of funds for necessary expenditures for the purchase of natural gas to fuel public work heaters. Again, Devon Lake.
Um, good evening, this is for the, um, lack of budgeting on the natural gas for the new heaters in the transportation and water building, as well as the main shop where sewer is housed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Comments? Alderman Rucker?
So, on the, for the first month of this year, and maybe I've lost my number, it cost us a, like, a couple grand just to heat that, that area?
So the first three bills that we received, um, for transportation and water building, which is the one across the street, um, was around forty-three hundred dollars for natural gas.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Collins, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella?
Second reading, Bill twenty-five dash thirty-six also passes. Next, we have Bill twenty-five dash thirty-seven. An ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter one two five, Human Resources System Personnel, Rules and Regulations, Section one two five point one six zero, Separation from Service as Set forth. City Administrator, Devon Lake.
So this ordinance was to update the separation ordinance, first to clarify that the city administrator may or may not authorize separation agreements, and then secondly, it includes an extra notice provision to, um, allow members departing from the city, uh, to receive an incentive for additional notice given if they choose to leave employment. Happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no comments or questions from the board, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella?
Bill twenty-five dash thirty-seven passes second reading. Four more. Bill twenty-five dash thirty-eight, ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter one two five, Human Resource System Personnel, Rules and Regulations, Section one two five point two two zero, alcohol, drug, and controlled substance abuse, and Section one two five point two three zero, supplemental policies as Set forth. Human Resource generous, Maddy Musso.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. Uh, this is second reading for us to make timely changes to supplemental policies with the approval of city administrator, and we are amending it to twenty business days notice to the board. Right, Tara?
Yes, this is the same floor amendment. Have to be, have to approve the floor amendment, and then we'll approve the ordinance, correct?
Comments from the board? Questions?
Excuse me, I understand, Tara, I'm sorry.
It's, this was the same thing as before, this is a floor amendment also. Or no, I'm sorry, this, the next one's a floor amendment. We had too many floor amendments last time, and I got confused, so no, this one's fine.
Was this one, we were going from ten to twenty days?
Right, but they did, they approved the ten to twenty days before they changed.
And actually.
Gotcha, no. We had too many.
So this one is as read?
As read, yes. I'm sorry, I'm getting.
No worries.
Too many floor amendments.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain motion to approve second reading.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Moreau, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella? Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Bill twenty-five dash thirty-eight passes. Next, we have Bill twenty-five dash thirty-nine. An ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter one two five, Human Resources System Personnel, Rules and Regulations, Section one two five point zero four zero, Human Resource Commission as Set forth. Again, Maddy.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. This one is to revise our, um, staff filling of the Human Resources Commission and their length of service therein.
Is this the one that has amendment to it, though?
Yes, no, this one does not have the amendment to it.
Okay, so this is as read also?
Yep, this one is the one that was in the packet. Uh-huh.
All right. Alderman Rucker?
The one that's in the packet is different than the one that was sent out, or, excuse me, I've got two different ones, and I don't know why, because the change that I, that I made in this, requested to be made, was in reference to the city clerk. It said the city clerk in the first, what we had, and then at the last meeting, we discussed wanting to say the city clerk or his or her designee. I don't know if we, if we, did we do that floor amendment?
Have the floor amendment.
Or is this the floor amendment we gotta do tonight first?
Yep, you have to do the floor amendment, and then do the same thing, so it's the same exact thing, yep. So you have to do the floor amendment, approve the floor amendment, and then, yep.
So, any comments or questions?
We're not doing this anymore, no more, no more changes.
Questions on the floor amendment? Seeing then, do I have a motion to approve the floor amendment?
Motion to approve the floor amendment.
Right, Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're going to do the Bill twenty-five thirty-nine as amended. Any comments or questions on that? Seeing then, do I have a motion to approve second reading as amended? Alderman Osteen, you wanna do this?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, second?
Second.
Alderman Moreau, roll call vote, please.
I can write this down here, Moreau's, okay. Alderman Osteen?
Yes, and for the record, I'm still wrapping my head around the process of the approval for the floor amendment as is, then going into an amendment for the amendment. Anyway, that's why I'm quiet, I'm just trying to think, is this the correct process we should be doing for this?
Yes.
It is.
Do you wanna vote first, and then I can explain it to you, or do you want me to explain it first?
We can circle back to that, but yes.
Okay. Um, I'll see. Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella?
All right, Bill twenty-five dash thirty-nine was approved as amended. Now, would you like to address Alderman Osteen?
Yes, okay, so what happened was, is last meeting, you approved the bill as written, and then Kevin wanted to make changes to the bill after it was already approved. So we had to come back with a floor amendment to what Kevin wanted to change, but you'd already approved it as written, so we had to do a floor amendment to change the bill.
But if we'd approved it as the first reading as written, then if we had not basically gotten an approval on the second reading, it could have been presented as the amended document, correct?
Right, if he would have approved it, if he would have made the motion.
Which meant the first reading would have died on the dais.
Right, well, the first, no, 'cause this bill, so the first bill's gonna stay, and the floor amendment's gonna attach right on the back of it, so we have first bill and then the floor amendment, so that'll be an entire bill is set.
Okay.
Because once, that's why floor amendments are very tough to do. After, if you've made a bill, if you've approved the bill, and then you come back and make changes, that's why you get, it's confusing to attach a floor amendment to the bill, 'cause you're changing something that's, the bill's already done, so that's why you have to do the floor amendment on top of it.
I, I was thinking, uh, just basically, if the second reading basically did not get nominated for approval, then you could have presented the amended bill, but anyway, just trying to wrap my head around the process.
Yeah, that's how, that's why.
Okay.
That's why floor amendments are tough, so it's best to make your, your changes before you approve.
Okay.
An ordinance, so you can.
Last meeting, we did some floor amendments, we did some one way and some the other way.
Right, some we did right, that's why it's confusing on how, like, one, one of them was right, and then the other one, and then everybody discussed how they wanted it after it was done, and then, so staff had to come back and change it to a floor amendment, so now I have two bills that I'm gonna put together, the first, and then this will be the second.
Okay.
Yeah, floor amendments are difficult to do.
Okay.
That's why you get confused.
Just question in the process.
Yep.
Make sure it's correct.
Nope, no, it's, no, it's correct. I went back and forth with Cole about it, and we hashed it out, and, yeah, there was some fighting going on, but we figured it out. We got it. So let's not do floor amendments anymore from the dais?
You're here?
Yeah, let's not do that. Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Bill twenty-five dash forty-one. An ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter two four five, Parks and Recreation Sections. Did I miss one?
Yeah, 'cause we have a floor amendment on this one.
Sorry.
Yep, this is another floor amendment.
Twenty, Bill twenty-five dash forty, um, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter six oh five, Business Licenses and Regulations, Section six oh five point zero seven zero, Fees as Set forth. And this one also is a floor amendment, you say?
Yep, it is.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the amendment?
So move.
Alderman Moreau, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those.
I have a question.
Okay.
Tara?
Yes.
The floor amendment is, is saying when it goes into effect, basically.
Correct.
So the business licenses are for twenty twenty-six.
Correct.
Did I just see that the contractor's license for twenty twenty-five just went out?
No, contractor doesn't go out until December.
Till December.
Right, that's when the new fees will go into effect in December of twenty-five.
Okay.
And then businesses will take effect next, in next year in twenty-six.
The report that, that the city administrator just put out, I was going through it, and it, I thought I saw where some contractors have already paid in ahead?
For, for twenty-five.
Oh, that's for twenty-five, that's not for twenty-six?
Correct.
Okay, 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 all right, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a first and second on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing then, do I have a motion to approve second reading as Bill twenty-five dash forty as amended?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Second, Alderman Osteen, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella?
All right, Bill twenty-five dash forty, second reading passes. Now, we're gonna move on to Bill twenty-five dash forty-one. An ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter two four five, Parks and Recreation, two four five point zero six zero, Park Sponsorship Fees as Set forth. You wanna take this one, too?
Should be Mr. Gregory.
Oh, what's this, presenter and originator, okay. Eric, would you like to take this?
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, this ordinance, as Cole went over it last time, was to give us more flexibility on, uh, the sponsorship, as far as what type of signs we use, uh, cheaper options, and updating, uh, basically taking some of it off the plate for the board to approve as far as wording and graphics and everything. I don't really have anything else to add. Cole has reviewed it and signed off on it, and I do recommend approval.
Dean? Alderman Hoffman?
I just wanted to clarify, that, uh, that does apply to the dog park, correct?
Yes, we have added to the dog park as an option for sponsorship, yes.
Okay, and we're, it's lined out, advertising is lined out in here, is that just clerical, or is there a reason why we're not calling it advertising, or?
We tried to separate out the advertising versus sponsorship, and so.
They are two different things down there, or?
Cole was concerned with First Amendment rights as far as advertising versus sponsorship.
Oh, that's right.
And what we can, yeah, put on the signs and what we can't, so.
Yep, all right, that's all I needed, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing then, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rucker, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Moreau?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Barrella? Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
All right, second reading, Bill twenty-five dash forty-one passes. Now, on to new business. First, we have a public hearing. This is a public hearing, a rezoning case four two six, J.M. Connors LLC. I'm gonna turn this over to our ever-vacationing city planner, Carrie Patterson.
All right, Mayor, members of the board, let's do some new stuff. What I got for you tonight is J.M. Connors LLC, gentleman named Jeremy Malinsky is requesting a rezoning of two point nine two acres that is located off of Rowan Road. The best way for me to tell you where this property is, if you're on the expressway, it's the one just, uh, back behind the post office that they're doing all the earthwork on. And basically, what we're dealing with here is a piece of property that originally was a part of the parcel and tract for Harper's Cove, and when the highway came through, it split it off, and it was still zoned agriculture and single-family residential, uh, because of that. Uh, this is a situation to where, you know, any property that's located between Osage Beach Parkway and the expressway is going to be a highly intensive piece of property unless it's rather large. This is a particular situation where it's rather shallow between the two, um, and kinda one of those things where it's just not fitting for residential-type use. Uh, what he is requesting is a rezoning from A one and R one B, uh, to C one. I took this to the planning commission at their last meeting, and they forwarded it to you with a recommendation to approve.
All right, very good. This is the, um, public hearing portion of this bill. Is there anybody here in the public who would like to speak on behalf or against this particular here in the public who would like to speak on behalf or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rose, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing has been closed. Now, we're going to move on to the official Bill 25 dash 42, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, adopting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri by rezoning a parcel of land as described in rezoning case number 426. This is the first reading, as Kerry Patterson explained. Do we have any comments or questions from the board? Alderman Hoffman?
Just a comment. I've had a couple of discussions with Mr. Malinsky and a couple of the landowners around, around that property. As, as Kerry Patterson said, it's not really great for residential over there. It's right next to the highway. I think this is kind of a slam dunk that, that this is, really needs to be moved into a commercial, a commercial zone, so I fully support this.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Osteen, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rucker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good. First reading, Bill 25 dash 42 passes.
Mayor, with your permission, I'm going to sneak out.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
To your vacation.
Next, we have Bill 25 dash 43, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to approve a contract with HydroClean LLC for the Rockway Lift Station Reline Project for an amount not to exceed $112,680. City engineer Drew Bowman, please.
Mayor, members of the board, this project got bid, well, advertised and bid. We received one proposal that you see before you. I do request the exception to the two, two-bid rule. This project is to reline the Rockway Lift Station, which is one of the two biggest lift stations in town. That concrete wet well has existing coating on the inside that is rapidly deteriorating. The sewer staff has a concern with the condition of that. And this was one of the vendors that Zach originally got the idea for relining this so that we can preserve the, one of the largest lift stations in town and protect it from the H2S gas that is generated by our sewer system. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy, happy to answer them.
Alderman Hoffman?
Did you say this was the only bid we got?
Yeah, it's kind of specialty work, and the, the, yeah, it's just kind of specialty work, and I got really good feedback from everyone that they've worked with. And again, Zach kind of found this vendor before he left, and he was excited to get them in town and do this work for us potentially.
Okay. Thanks.
Alderman Collins?
Does that mean it wasn't submitted to anybody else for a bid?
It was publicly advertised.
That all you had, Alderman?
I mean, I don't know, I feel like that's a lot of money to spend without a second bid.
Alderman Rose?
The other lift stations, what's the condition of the wet wells on the other ones?
I have not seen inside of all of them. There's approximately 100 of them. The ones that I've seen inside are in much better condition than this one. There is an epoxy or some sort of coating that was applied to it in the past, and the, the visible condition of that coating is deteriorating rapidly. And that coating would protect the concrete if it were working correctly, but it's not.
So, so we could feel comfortable for the other lift stations, and not having to replace it is like we are here?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay.
Alderman Osteen? My questions, comments are more general in nature. They're more directed to Cole, who's not here, but in the interim, I'll direct these to Devin. This goes back to the bid process. I just wanted to know if you could provide clarification to the board on the bid process for these instances where we only received one bid. I don't know if there's anything in our ordinances that says we would have to rebid the project again based on the number of responses we get, or if there's anything in our ordinances that addresses this specifically.
So, as far as I know, that's the, the ordinance I attached here, the board can, the, the way our bidding process works is you generally, yes, you have to have at least two responsive bids to just award, but I am asking for the exception here, per municipal code, chapter 135, article 2, purchasing, procurement, transfers, and sales. The way that the project was advertised, it was advertised publicly for at least three weeks and meets all of the other requirements that we generally do.
So, so in the bidding process, we, I guess we can't do this, we publicly put that out for bid. But I, I was thinking, but I think I've already talked myself out of this, that we cannot approach businesses and ask them to submit a bid, because that would show favoritism for the city. Okay, well, I wish there was some loophole where we could try to get bids actively from people, as opposed to just putting it out there publicly and waiting to see what we get. Just thinking out loud.
Like Drew said, this is a very specialized application. If we would have advertised for them to spray Geocrete, which is what he's talking about that's deteriorating currently, you would have received multiple bids for that. That's a very common repair to concrete, but because this is a very specialized product that Zach had done some research on, that's why you're only seeing one bid.
And this material is specifically resistant to that highly corrosive H2S gas that is generated by our sewer system. And it leaches out the cementous material of concrete, and also can penetrate into the concrete, stay in the concrete, and also rust out rebar very quickly. And that is the number-one way that you'll lose structural integrity on a piece of reinforced concrete, is if your rebar within the structure starts corroding and expanding.
I personally have no issue with the bid itself. I just wish we had some type of comparable bid or some other numbers that we could basically justify this, but it is what it is. Alderman Rucker?
We've had this a lot of times as it relates to our sewer system. I would say the staff has followed the ordinance, and they've done exactly what the ordinance has, has said. And basically, they brought it to us, which we're the only, the board has to make that decision, and they pointed out there's only one bid. But it's, it seems like in our sewer area, we run into this a lot because of the uniqueness to our system. So, I'm not saying that I'm, I'm glad it happened, but I mean, it, it's something that over the years, we've seen a lot because of the specific nature of our system.
Alderman Hoffman?
I'd just like to point out that, you know, nobody likes getting one bid back, but, you know, if we, there's just, it's not cost-effective for a lot of companies to come from Topeka to come down and bid on this. And, you know, if we want to wait on some things, that's, you know, like a memorial, that's one thing, but the sewer is just not something I think we should be waiting around on.
Alderman Marose?
Obviously, I'm not one that's really familiar with lift stations, but I just wondered, with this new covering, so to speak, that we're going to be putting on, will that affect the operation of the lift station temporarily while you're, while it's being constructed?
So, yeah, the, the lift station will have to be pumped around, essentially. There's, there's some pumping that will have to be done around the lift station while this application is done. It's something that I'll have to coordinate with our staff and the contractor in order to accomplish this. We did put out as an ad alternate to supply the, the pumping, but this, this company could not find a subcontractor to do it, and did not, could not accomplish that themselves without a subcontractor.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Hey, hold on.
Alderman Collins?
Devin, you mentioned that if we were doing a different alternative, we would have gotten a lot of bids back. Can you explain why we're doing this one instead of an alternative that more people do?
So like, as Drew stated, that H2S gas-
Okay.
-deteriorates concrete. So, any type of concrete product that you apply will corrode, and eventually, you'll lose the capacity, and the walls of the, the wet well will fall in if you-
So it isn't a similar product?
No, it's actually like a plastic liner.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, first reading, Bill 25 dash 43 passes. Next, we have Bill 25 dash 44, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to sign a change order number one with Don Schneider Excavating Company, Inc., for the Veterans Memorial Project not to exceed the amount of $172,217.90. We're asking for a first and second reading. City engineer Drew Bowman.
Mayor, members of the board, the first thing I want to point out is that this change order that I'm requesting is for a total of $14,467.90, bringing it up to that $72,000 total project value. The original agreement with the Elks Lodge had them providing the material of the flagpoles for the Veterans Memorial Project. They were supposed to be, and were agreed upon by the city, to be a commercial-grade flagpole that would be tamper-proof and, and withstand wind speeds of beyond the maximum that we generally see. The flagpoles that were delivered on-site were more of a residential-grade flagpole that telescoped up, and it just were not suitable for this project, was not what was agreed upon with the Elks Lodge. So this change order is in an effort to expedite the delivery of these new commercial-grade flagpoles through the contractor, and then have the Elks Lodge reimburse us for the actual flagpoles. The actual flagpoles are at a cost of $8,800. The original flagpoles, as designed by our design consultant, had the lighting for the flags to be mounted to the flagpoles themselves. However, these new flagpoles that are being procured through the construction, they have to be mounted on the ground. So there's an additional dollar amount there to mount the, the lighting for the flagpoles on the ground. Per the flag code, it is best practice to have these flags lit, but it is not 100% required. So I just ask to receive some guidance as to how you believe the flags should be lit, because from my conversations with the Elks, they are not able to afford the changes, to reimburse the city for the changes to the lighting.
I'm going to step in there first, if you don't mind, to try to clarify a couple of things, because I've kind of been involved in this process. And I did talk to Fred Cackut on the phone about this. To try to simplify things, Drew did a great job of explaining like an engineer, but let me try to do it while I dumb things down for me.
Thank you, sir.
Basically, the project was approved on, they delivered the wrong flags. They did not deliver the commercial-sized flags, they delivered household-sized flags. The reason it's been sitting out there bare is because they were expecting the delivery of commercial flags. And they cannot do anything until commercial flags come in. So there, it's been sitting for weeks because we got the wrong flags. And talking, Drew talking to the Elks Lodge, why they delivered the wrong flags, I don't think anybody knows, but the correct flags are round numbers, going to cost nine grand, which they will pay for. That leaves a balance of about five grand for lighting. And being a nonprofit organization, they don't have the other five grand, because everything, as you know, I've been an Elk member for decades. Most of that goes to the veterans and nonprofit organizations. So they will cover everything. They cannot come up with the additional five grand for the lighting. So two things would happen. We can put one light on the flags, which would not be appropriate. It just, why do any? Or we could say, fine, we won't put any lights on it, and they're going to cover it. So the, the cost to the city would be no different if we did that, because they'll reimburse us for the $9,000. So what we're looking at here is for $5,000 for appropriate lighting that the city would cover rather than the Elks. Is that pretty accurate?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Osteen? First of all, in our contractual obligation with the Elks concerning the memorial, I don't see specifically in the contract where there's verification for overruns to be reimbursed to the city by the Elks.
No, in the agreement, they agreed to supply flagpoles of an approximate cost of $5,200, in order to expedite the delivery of this material. In partnering with the, the contractor and the Elks, and trying to get this project, instead of being a giant hole out front, trying to be an actual memorial, to be visible in the near future, I went through the contractor and tried to procure these as quickly as possible. Still keeping in mind cost, but these are both cost-effective and timely. And they agreed to reimburse us for the flagpoles.
And, and I'm going to go ahead and give you my bias, too, and then I'll be quiet, because, especially with the board being one short tonight, my vote won't come into play. But I just wanted to express, I'm in total favor of this. I think the city of Osage Beach would be proud to have the display here. I think the veterans would be proud to have the display here. It's going to cost the city five grand more than they expected, and I hope the board decides to go with this and we get it done. Alderman Hoffman?
As everyone knows, I'm a veteran. I've been fully supporting this. However, I don't have any problem with the, the five grand for the lights, but do we have a contract in place with them saying that they are going to repay us, not a handshake deal?
I, I don't have that in paper, no. I've, I've talked to Fred and with Steve Schmidt at the Elks Lodge. I can be sure, before we tell the contractor to, you know, to order, I'll be sure to get that in writing from them.
If I could continue on this, we've gone down this road a couple of times in the past two years on handshake deals, and then we didn't get our money. And as much as I want to support this, I think that there needs to be some signed contract that they're going to pay us back. And without Cole here, I'm just wondering if maybe we should table this two weeks.
Yeah, we've got, they are asking for first and second, so I understand. Alderman Rucker?
First of all, it needs to be done right, and to do it right, it needs to be properly lit. And the proper lighting, as engineers have found out, is to light it from the bottom. That is going to be more expense. My numbers, the mayor's numbers are a few bucks off, but still, I'm $5,600, you're $5,000, but it's still, I support it. I have a concern that, that, you know, we don't have something in writing, but I believe that the Elks will stand behind it. And I would be in favor of this with the caveat that before the go-ahead is given to the contractor, that, that we have something in writing. It doesn't need to come back to the board, as far as I'm concerned, if we take care of. And one more thing on this, just while we're on it, Devin, Devin, April, between the two of you, the basically $8,800 that we're going to be getting back, will, will there be a, a budget amendment coming forward, since that's a income that is at one time wasn't?
We had talked to Carrie Bell about this, and because it is an offset to the expense, we would just credit that check to the expense, rather than booking it as revenue, and then it's a wash.
Okay, as long as, as long as the budget, that's my own, otherwise, I support it and move forward tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Osteen? Just to clarify my initial question on all this, it basically just mirrors what Alderman Hoffman has stated, was I was asking, this had nothing to do with the lights, this had to go with the flagpoles and the, and the additional cost the city's going to incur with just a handshake deal, or just somebody stating, sure, we'll pay you back the difference. That's what I was alluding to, but I'm glad other all have been brought it up. It was, once again, the lights are a different matter, and I agree with that, because obviously, if we're going to put it on our property, we want it done right. It was just, I'm not comfortable with just handshake deals with people saying, yes, go ahead and spend the taxpayers' money for this, and we'll pay you back later. Anyway, just wanted to clarify. Any other, Alderman Hoffman?
Well, this question is to Tara. Can we make an amendment that, and approve this contingent upon a contract in place?
You can make an amendment, yes.
I mean, a motion. Can we make a motion?
Would you like a motion to amend?
I would like to make a motion to amend that this goes into effect upon completion and signed contract by the Elks Lodge.
Do I have a second to the amendment? I'll second that with more caveats. Okay, signed contract to basically guarantee the reimbursement for the cost overruns regarding the flagpoles. So it's specific, correct?
No. Not for the-
Alderman Rucker?
Not for the overrun, just for the flags.
Okay, for the-
That's all we're asking for.
Reimbursed, okay.
Because there's going to be some overrun that we're going to be taking on, but just the flags.
Just the flags, okay.
Right?
So I believe the amendment is going to be for, upon the signature for the contract to reimburse for the amount of the flag?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second. Second, Alderman Osteen. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of the first reading with this said amendment? Excuse me, do I have a motion to approve the first reading as amended?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rose, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're going to do this again. Second reading, same bill, as amended. Bill 25 dash 44, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to sign a change order number one with Don Schneider Excavating Company, Inc., for Veterans Memorial Project not to exceed the amount of $172,217.90 as amended. Do I have a motion to approve second reading as amended?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Rose?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Varela?
Very good, thank you, folks. Bill... I'm sorry, Alderman Rucker?
Yeah, just a point, Tara, that's the correct way to do it?
Yes.
That's what we should be doing?
That's exactly what you need, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
All right, Bill twenty-five dash forty-five, in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to approve a contract with McKim and Creed for the East System Leak Survey Project for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, first reading. City administrator, city engineer, Drew Bowman.
Sorry, I'm trying to get an email out before... Mayor members of the board, the water, the East System Water Leak Survey Project is a project that, that the Public Works is looking to get accomplished and is part of the Water Master Plan in order to identify, on the east side, some of the leaks and water loss that we're experiencing on the east side. As presented in the Water Master Plan, there's a tremendous amount, I can't remember the exact percentage, tremendous amount of water loss in the east system, and more so than even the west system. So this is to execute an agreement with McKim and Creed in order to perform that water leak survey, in order to identify those leaks. I do recommend approval.
Comments from the board? Questions? Alderman Osteen?
Just some comments, the issue with leaks in the system has been brought up on multiple occasions. This was a topic that was discussed when we did a Water Master Plan. This also was a topic that was brought up when we were discussing increasing sewer and water rates, and usage, basically how much water is being used versus how much we're getting paid for, which basically also identified that there's lots of water going lord knows where. So obviously, I'm 100% behind this, because, once again, this has been brought up a few times, that we need to investigate or dig further into what is going on with the water system regarding leaks.
Alderman Rucker?
Do we, do we know what the flow of work will be? Will they just come in and be done in a couple days, or will this take a couple of months? And will they give feedback at the end, or will they give the water department some feedback as they find these leaks? Any, just any thought on how that will flow?
I figure it would be kind of a constant partnering, that they would come in, they'd partner with the water department, they would go out, and if they identify any leaks, we'd kind of be notified about them somewhat immediately informally, and then they're supposed to be presenting some sort of report or finding and GIS map of the leaks that they do find. So then there'd be...
Expectation on when they'll start and when they might conclude?
I think the project will go pretty quickly, the contacts that I reached out to, that they listed, said that they were able to come in and complete the work rather quickly, and then have the report out also rather quickly.
The timeline on this is thirty days. They must complete the work in thirty days after their issued notice to proceed.
Okay, that's, that's great, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Osteen, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First reading, Bill twenty-five dash forty-five passed. Next, we have a motion to approve the purchase of a two-hundred-and-one horsepower submersible pump in soft start from MEC for one hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. City Administrator, Devin Lake?
Good evening, this would be a backup pump for the sand lift station, which is our largest lift station. As you know, there has been some issues with pumps in that particular lift station, they're very large, they also have a very large lead time, they're very expensive. We currently are using two pumps at that lift station, one is being repaired and one is ordered. As you can see on this, the lead time, I think, is twenty-six weeks, so that, or twenty, twenty weeks. So the one that was ordered, I don't remember when, has not been received yet. So I think for redundancy, and to make sure that we have uninterrupted service, and to avoid unbudgeted pumping, it would be a good idea to have a spare pump on hand like we do for the other lift stations. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Hoffman?
Is this already budgeted?
It's coming out of the repair system, and we think, at this point in the year, we can cover the cost.
Okay, that's all we needed to know from me.
Alderman Osteen?
Just a quick comment, twenty-week delivery time?
Yep.
Just wanted to point that out, that that's very disconcerting.
Unfortunately, these pumps have lots of lead time.
Mm-hmm.
It's becoming a norm.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
Second.
Who was that, Alderman Collins?
Here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Osteen approved. Next, we're gonna move on to Public Works supervision hierarchy discussion. City Administrator, Devin Lake?
Good evening, as you guys probably remember, when Zach did his presentation for this year's budget, he had presented you guys with an organizational chart for the future hierarchy of Public Works. Since Zach's been gone, and I've been overseeing Public Works, these guys are already operating in those positions as being supervisors. So I would propose that we, I'll bring up another point that Rob had brought up to me, which I don't think about, and we probably don't think about, but when they're out in the public, and a customer or citizen comes up and says, hey, I want to talk to who's in charge. And Rob says, well, I'm the foreman. And they're like, no, I want to talk to who's in charge. People don't understand that foremen are the supervisors. And so I would propose that we change their titles to supervisors, so that, number one, they're operating in that capacity now. But it also will provide clarity to the citizens. And then they're struggling right now with workload, being administrative and supervisory, so talking to vendors, talking to contractors that hit water mains and sewer mains, dealing with vendors, doing all the payroll, all of those things, but also being able to support their crews in the field. And so what we're proposing, and they're all three here to speak on behalf of their individual departments and the challenges that they see, but what we're proposing is that they become supervisors of their departments, and then they have crew leaders underneath them that are in the field, that are the, in charge of the job site, and that they're able to be a more supervisory role. So if you would, they're here and ready to speak on behalf of each of their individual departments, if you would like to hear from them. Sure.
What three departments do we have?
Water, sewer, and transportation.
How do they feel about it?
Who would like to go first?
Board and the mayor. As we all know, we had two of our upper management at Public Works leave at the beginning of the year. As a result of that, it meant that those duties have been dropped in the laps of the foreman. So I will give you a list of some of the new duties that we acquired. Ordering of parts and materials, taking phone calls from the public and the vendors, setting up training sessions, filling out incident property damage reports, coding invoices, making the on-call schedules, answering direct customers, sending and responding to emails daily, attending department manager meetings, talking over the odor, or taking over the odor control, helping with the implementation of the cartograph system. All of these things have been added to our day-to-day tasks, and we have not slowed down work. I hope that you don't see this as a complaint, but as a justification, that although this extra workload was dumped on us, we have not taken a step back and complained about this. We have stepped up and taken care of what was needed done.
Thank you, Chris. If, I know you don't, I know you don't need it, but step up to the microphone, if you would please, Rob.
Absolutely, I probably won't need it. Basically, what he said is gonna be basically what I've got on my notes, too. And, but we're, I think, a lot of people think we're lost a manager, so we're getting loads dumped on us. I've been here probably the longest in the supervisor role, they hired me straight off the street. These guys are behind me, you know, but I've had four different people in their spots, two and two, that worked with me and been in this situation numerous times. I think it's the third round for me, for losing a Public Works Ops Manager to a director to whatever title they gave him at that time. But our workload's always been heavy, it always has been, and as I'm, you know, even if you replace that person, our workload's still gonna be heavy. I mean, we carry our phones 24/7 on us, we don't ask for a dime, I know a lot of other departments do that, too. We want you to call, we take care of our crew, we take care of the citizens. Whoever wants to call me, I'll answer the phone, shoot a text, email, anytime, we don't, you know. But where I'm having problems probably the most is being out with my crew. I've got people in under me that are making the calls, you know, and then they call me and say, hey, am I making the right call? And I think, yeah, or maybe you need to do this. So down below me, with somebody out there on the job all the time, I need a crew leader out there, maybe even two, you know, where they can, where the public comes up to them before they come up to me, because I'm filling in the blanks where I need to go. So it seems like I'm just chasing my tail and not doing a good job at any of it, I'm just barely keeping afloat, you know. And I agree with these two guys, I see them, they do excellent job, their departments are awesome, you know, but we're kind of all in the same boat, we're kind of needing, you know, and I'm not good at a public speaking, you know, but the thing is with it, is when I'm addressing, let's say, here's a good example, I know I'm all over the place, but a good example is, is when I get a call, they're wanting to talk to the transportation supervisor. And I'm like, yeah, I'm the foreman, and I said, well, it stops here, you know, you gotta tell them, oh, okay. And I'm dealing with vendors, and I'm ordering trucks, and I'm talking, you know, and stuff like that. So I'm not out in the field, so I'm hurting in the field just as much as I'm hurting everywhere else, too. And even if we get a director in, it's gonna take him no time how long to figure this out, you know, it'd probably take him six months to a year to figure out, hey, this is the guy I want in that spot. I don't blame him for that. But I think we've proved ourself already, you know, whoever you bring in, you know, I think he'll be just fine with what we do, you know, hope he is, but anyway, that's kind of all I got. I mean, I, what Chris said, that's basically what I got worded a little different. And I can go point to point what I do, you know, and I'm gonna miss a thousand different ones, you know, what we do on a daily basis and stuff. But I'm proud of my job, I love it, you know, and, but I do think we need to get rid of the foreman side of things, and go up with, you know, a manager side, because we're doing that, and I need to get crew leaders in under me, where they, I'll feel better if they're out there with the crew, and then they can deal with a little bit buffering coming up to me, you know, you know, so it's kind of all I got. So if you got any questions for me, or you want him to go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hello, thank you guys for your time. Rob and Chris touched on, touched on pretty much everything that I'm going to say. The only thing I'm gonna add to what they said was, we cannot be in both places. We cannot be in the office and be receiving those phone calls and replying to emails and being what, what I think a foreman is, which is out in the field with their guys, and trying to lead by example. It, it's just hard. And then I feel, and it weighs on me, that I'm letting them down because I have to take care of priorities and reach out to citizens, or contractors, or anything else. So I think Chris said it really well, and I support everything that these guys say.
Also, Matty has done the calculations as far as payroll is concerned, would you like to talk about that part, Matty?
So I did do cursory analysis on all of their current people and positions, their open They are all under budget if we were to make the adjustment, which, do you want me to talk about potential pay plan adjustments?
Yeah, I mean, we were planning on, so currently, these three foremen are a ten, so to move them up to a supervisor, they would be an eleven, and then we would add the title of crew leader in their ten spot. But ultimately, at the end of the day, there is no budget implications.
Correct. Anybody have any questions?
Alderman Rose?
Do each of you in your each department, do you have someone working now that you would recommend to be a foreman in each department?
Crew leader.
Yes.
Leader.
Okay, if you said it, I missed it, I'm sorry. I didn't know he said it. Was that mentioned?
No, he was saying, they want a crew leader, not a foreman.
Well...
Right, so the, so what...
Okay, the word was wrong.
The crew leader would become what more the foreman should be, which is out in the field. And I, I know, in my department, and what I've talked to these guys, yes, we would have somebody that we would just...
That you could rely on?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Alderman Rucker?
Number of thoughts, first of all, when, when, when we had the loss of our two management teams, I asked why we didn't fill the position of supervisor at that time, and was wanting to fill it at that time, but was told we wouldn't do it until we hired a new director.
So that was my plan?
Now that's changed.
Yeah, I've been talking to them, and we feel like, you know, again, like they brought up, that director could not be up to speed for a year.
I 100% support that, that's why I wanted to do it back then. I guess, obviously, this is a discussion, but in order to move forward, what I would, what I think has to come forward with the board is an official budget change.
Budget change, yeah.
Along with that, a, a chart.
Hierarchy.
Yes, yeah.
Excuse me, I lost my...
We would redo the pay chart, bring a budget amendment, and bring any organizational chart.
What will be the, the impact, basically, Matty, it said probably the impact on the budget would be significantly, we would be right about the same, or...
There is, yeah, they're all three departments are well under budget with the adjustment.
The last question is, and I realize it's all still in discussion, but at, at the budget time, when we approved the budget, and we approved an amount, we also approved a headcount, so to speak, of so many people that there would be. Is that headcount gonna still remain the same, or are we gonna add to it, or are we gonna take away?
We would have to add one, because originally Zach had only wanted to do a sewer superintendent, and then a water slash transportation superintendent. So they would each become superintendents of their individual departments, and so we would add one headcount.
Well, I would, Carrie Wade, I don't want to throw Zach under the bus, but that was not necessarily all, I don't want to say it wasn't all Zach's, the consultant, and we had the board at that time that didn't want to have that supervisor in each place either. So it, it was a combination, I don't want anyone to feel like it was one person that didn't want, but the consultant themselves are the ones that also brought that to us, that we needed to have just two, one in charge of the one department of sewer, and the other in the other two. So I just want to bring that up, it was there, what they had presented. And I know there was a concern, from the board's standpoint, that there was gonna be too many supervisors with what that system was, and that's why we went down that road. I think that it's appropriate that we listen to our staff, and, and that we look at the amount of people there are, and the amount of supervision there is. And the other thing is, I 100% support the re-identifying of the name or the title. I was involved in an organization that title was a lot, and, and even though, whatever we call you, you're the guy who's in charge, it's not much what we call you, it's what the public perceives, and I, and I totally understand that and totally support that. So that's, that's something that we have to continue to work through as the, our society changes and, and everything that, that we may bring about changes of a title, but in this case, it will probably bring a difference of pay, but... But in the future, I would say to the staff, that needs to be something that you need to be attentive to. And if we can sometime rename the person simply to make it appropriate, that doesn't always mean they have to have an increase in pay if there's not additional responsibility. In this situation, you're talking additional responsibility, but, so I, I fully support this moving forward. I just got the eye across the teacup, a guy looking for it to be presented in a written form where I can really put my teeth into it, but I think you're moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions on there? Alderman Hoffman.
Yeah, I'm just trying to do some quick math here. So is it fair to say that we are eliminating two positions, adding a Public Works Director position and advancing six people up one grade? Did we eliminate two positions?
I'm having a hard time with the math. Sorry.
So are you trying to say what this would be doing is eliminating more or less the superintendent's role and changing our titles to supervisors? So you would technically be eliminating two, correct?
I guess, yeah.
And you would just be moving us up and change, or in giving three other individuals a different title?
Yeah.
And?
Yes. Okay, so I told Alderman Rucker incorrectly. I'm eliminating two positions.
I have a problem with that, then. I want to put more bodies in that department, not take away.
Matty, can you clear, clear this up?
Go department by department and I'll tell you what's going on. So originally, we had instated the opportunity to do a water slash transportation superintendent. That's now being split, basically, that supervisory level position, one for each department. So you're adding half a position there to water and transpo. Your foreman would be becoming a crew lead. We're not adding anything else to that department beyond there. So basically, half a person to water, or I'm sorry, half a person to transportation, half a person to water. Sewer is actually staying the same because we'd already opted in that we were going to try to hire another foreman in addition to Chris this year, and we have that sewer superintendent supervisory position already. So sewer's staying the same as far as headcount.
We will get this finalized when we bring the amendment. This is getting very confusing.
It sounds like I got my math right, to be honest with you.
Basically, it's going to be null by the end.
I don't want to, I don't want to take away from the, I don't want to, I would rather see the budget go up rather than a headcount go down.
I will prepare all that stuff and send it out prior to us bringing it to the board.
Well, and I was just trying to clarify, when you basically said we were on budget by doing it this way, I was trying to figure out, the only way that could be possible is if we're adding this and this is still on budget, is if we had eliminated enough to kind of counterbalance it, which is what it seems like we did.
Well, and we also have vacancies in positions that affected all three budgets because we haven't paid an overarching manager for Public Works since February. We've got some leeway there. Same thing with the superintendent in sewer. Sewer still has a couple of positions open as well, so they've, they've got that room in there right now.
Okay.
Obviously, next year, things will have to be readjusted, but.
Yeah. And as far as the titling, I mean, it seems obvious that that's better for the public.
Basically, we're changing their title, bumping their pay plan up a level, and then readjusting the foreman title to crew lead.
Okay. I was just concerned that we're bumping everybody up or adding the Public Works Director and, oh, by the way, now we got to go add this other position and all of a sudden, we are not in budget.
The foreman position, we would still have to advertise that one and interview for it. It would be bumping these three up, is my understanding, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Alderman Rucker.
I think you just answered a question I was about ready to ask, but my brain was already trying to figure out how to ask it. Let me ask that question. So we would, to follow our ordinance, won't we have to advertise for the three supervisory positions and in-house and advertise for the three other positions rather than just, just give these people the title because it wouldn't be followed in case somebody else would say, hey, I, I wanted to put my name in a hat?
I'll have to double check, but I believe there is part of an ordinance where Devin can make that adjustment herself.
Okay. I just want to make sure that somebody can't later come back and say, well, no, 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 you didn't give somebody, everybody that opportunity. I just want to be fair.
Basically, we're readjusting their job duties, scaling their pay up to match, and then we're adding in, would be the better way to phrase it, adding in the crew lead position. And we have to advertise for that new position.
Want to be fair.
Makes more sense.
I'm getting the idea that we're, we've got positivity in this, so we'll move forward with getting all the documents and the organizational chart and all the numbers figured out. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you for all your hard work, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. And are you guys sticking around for the rest of the meeting?
We can.
You don't have to. I'll just, I tell you what, I'm going to do, staff communication is next, but I think I have the authority to switch things around a little bit. I'm going to go ahead and do my mayor. What's the word?
Communication.
Communications.
I'll do it now, so I want to do it now rather than last. It's one of the perks I get, right? No, I just wanted to say that Public Works here, that I've had the opportunity the last few days to work pretty close with them, interviewing different Public Works, possible director jobs. And one thing I said months ago was, what can we do to bring down the barrier between Public Works and the staff here at City Hall? And I think there is a barrier there. And I think that's felt on both sides. I think mainly, mainly by Public Works. And we need to do a better job. And Caleb had a good idea today, whether it's having a barbecue or going over there and so the people here can meet them. So if they see him on the street, they know him by name, they can be proud of what they do. And so I'm going to kind of put this on whoever, whether it's Matty or whatever, if we can do some sort of thing at Public Works in the next month or so, get to know each other so we can do a better job knowing that the Public Works Director, Public Works people and citizens and here, people on the dais. I guess I'm fumbling with words because the last couple of days has been very enlightening as, as I was able to go out and about around the city and look at the lift stations and look at the water towers and ask the questions. And you guys really do, guys and gals, a phenomenal job out there. And I think sometimes when you flush the toilet or you turn on the water spigot or whatever, you just, it works. And if it doesn't work, you complain. And the sewer smell is something that, we had a discussion today, that is primary to the board, primary to myself, to get the sewage smell under control. And they were telling me the different things they've tried and the different things they're going to try, and we've got the bugs in place and we've got the vapex that needs repair. We're getting all that done. But I think it is very important that these, these three gentlemen would move up in a supervisory position, get a good manager, and as we move forward, we're the director. But let's just give them the support on a regular basis that they need and try to bring them into the family so that we feel a little more comfortable between staff and Public Works. So that's what I have to say for my citizens' communications. So we'll move on to staff.
Can I interrupt real quick?
You'll have your time. No, go ahead. Sorry.
Just a point of interest. Jamie and I had had preliminary discussions, I think I might have talked to Eric about this, too, about possibly putting together where we got out of halfway through the day on a Friday or maybe on a Monday or something and do a croppy tournament slash barbecue at the weigh-in. I don't know if that's something that might be interesting to the staff, but I'm just kind of throwing that out there to you, Matty. It's an idea.
All right. Anyway, you're welcome to stay or go, folks, but thank you very much for your, your conversations tonight. So let's move on to staff communication and City Administrator Devon Lake.
Well, before, at least Caleb leaves, I want to brag on the Water Department real quick. On Tuesday, we had two separate citizens call in to brag about our Water Department. The first one was over on Blue Bird Circle. A contractor had hit a water line over there and they got over there quickly to fix it. The other was one on Young Lane. They had a leak that they had done a line installation for. So to get two citizen kudos in one day is awesome. So I want to thank the Water Department and Transportation and Sewer. I'm not going to leave you guys out, but they do an awesome job. The second thing is I sent out my quarterly newsletter. I hope you guys thought that was helpful. If you have any suggestions or changes you'd like to see made, I'll be open to that. Jamie helped me tremendously to make it look nice and pretty. But that's all I have this evening.
All right. Thank you. Assistant City Administrator April White.
I understand Kerry Patterson left because he's on vacation, but I wanted to recognize him and Lieutenant Tim Taylor. Since the last board meeting, we've had, we have two employees who had, I call them workversaries, but work anniversaries, and they have been here since the 1900s. So I thought that was cool. They both started.
That's unfortunate.
So you phrased that right.
Sounds weird, doesn't it? But they both started in 1999, so they've both been here for 26 years now. So that's huge.
Very good.
And then I wanted to congratulate the Parks Team on a good Easter egg hunt. I was so hesitant or worried when we had to cancel due to the rain. It's the first Easter egg hunt we've had to cancel to, due to inclement weather. So I was bummed, but it all worked out great. Jamie re-advertised it, the Parks Team rescheduled everything, and it turned out great. So thank you, guys. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Matty. Chief Davis.
Yeah, I just want, I want to shout out to five of our officers, well, three officers and two communications officers. Yesterday, they had a, we had a, a mother and her six kids pulling a camper with their vehicle, had some vehicle issues. The camper needed tires. And Corporal Leva, Officer Phillips, Sergeant Morley, and two of our communication officer, Wendy Foster and Haley, I'm drawing a blank on Haley's last name, Scott. They all pulled together with their resources, their, their contacts in the community and had the vehicle fixed, got vehicle tires. So this mom and her six kids could get on their way to Illinois. So, you know, that's, and a shout out to Sunset Auto, they're the ones that did the work for pretty reasonable cost.
Awesome.
But, you know, our, our guys and gals, they go, they go above and beyond just besides their, you know, making the arrest and keeping everybody safe. They do it in that way, too. Second thing I have, glad to say, and really don't want to say it too loud, Police Department is at full staff. We've got our last two, our last two in the academy, they graduate in July. But with that being said, I do have two retirements coming up, one at the end of this year and one on first of next year. So we'll work on filling that. National Police Week is coming up. I won't be here at the next board meeting. One of the lieutenants will be filling in, but there's five of us going, six of us total going to National Police Week to recognize Felicia being put on the wall. Actually, this Saturday morning, Friday night, there's a candlelight vigil for the Missouri Law Enforcement Memorial in Jeff City. The vigil is at 8:00 PM at the Law Enforcement Memorial, just outside the Capitol on the circle. And then there'll be a memorial service Saturday morning at 10:00. Public's invited, but she'll be, Jamie put something on our city page, I saw it yesterday. So she's on top of that as well. So, and Communications has a new one starting in the upcoming future. Chris Francis is coming on board. So we're trying to fill all the spots.
Good deal.
And a records clerk that starts next Thursday, Tina Smith. So we're there. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. City Clerk Tarver.
I'm good tonight. I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right. Very good. How about it, Drew? You got anything?
Actively hiring for all positions in the engineering department. Shout out to Chief, he's helping me try and figure out how to procure a vehicle. I've never done that before, so really appreciate the help. And then I'd like to throw a shout out to the Parks Department. Got graciously conned into coaching T-ball this year, and it's going remarkably well. We're herding the cats and our first games start next week. And all the communication that they've been doing with all the rain that we've been dodging has been awesome. So shout out to them.
All right. Matty? HR, Matty?
I don't have much from the HR department, just getting a lot of new faces in here. Abby's been doing a really good job getting our new hires orientated and onboarded. That's all I've got.
Very good. Mary Gregory, Parks.
To echo what April said, Parks Department worked very hard to get ready for the 10th Annual Easter Egg Hunt that happened this past Saturday, rescheduled due to inclement weather, but happy to say that it was very well attended, maybe slightly less than previous years, but there was a lot going on at the lake. We still had a very good turnout. And specifically, thank you to Victory Church for providing volunteers. They did an outstanding job, as always, and the Shriners for providing extra bicycles. So we had double the chance for the kids to win and lots of Happy Kids Saturdays. So went very well. And first Little League games are scheduled to start on Monday, so Parks Team is very busy prepping the fields, getting everything ready for that. And yeah, it's, it's been a lot to coordinate. Very lucky to have our new rec specialist, Caitlin. She's been outstanding. And thank you, Drew, for agreeing to herd the cats. It's much appreciated.
To the cats' minds.
There you go. Sand volleyball courts recently been opened and have been very busy. And I'd like to echo what everybody else says. Thanks to the Public Works Department, Transportation Department for helping us with that, and then Water Department, Sewer Department are always ready to jump in and help the parks, and we really appreciate it. I know I tell you guys that, but you, you help us out a lot. Happy to say we're going to place the baskets for the Frisbee Golf Course tomorrow morning and just need to do a little bit more clearing and have the signs made, and we'll probably have it open before the end of the month. We will have it open before the end of the month. Let me rephrase that. And just as a reminder to the public, our Movies in the Park event, our first one, is scheduled for Friday, May 16th at 8:00 PM on Soccer Field 1, and we're going to be showing Homeward Bound. So bring the family out. This is a free event. Bring a blanket and watch a movie in the park. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. City Treasurer Carrie Bell.
Yes, Mayor Mortimer. I'm, thank you.
Our, we have a new utility billing clerk that's been with us 30 days already. If you haven't had a chance, I know I introduced by email, but if you haven't had a chance to meet her directly, she's right in the front of City Hall, Bethany Gregory, doing a great job for us. And I want to give Keegan Powers a shout out. She's still doing AP full-time and city clerk position and training for her old position. So greatly appreciate her efforts. We're looking forward to having our AP clerk back around mid-May, which will start to give some, some relief to our team. But thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Rucker, you have anything?
A couple of things. First of all, just with Dido, it had been set on the Easter Egg Hunt, considering the other competition that was going on that day with the Dogwood Festival and the parade, I think, think it was very well attended. I will have to say that I was considering not going down because of the dreary weather until my two and a half-year-old granddaughter got on the phone and said, Papa, you got to go. And so there I was, but it was, it was very well attended and very good job. Shout out to Sergeant and, and Chief, it's McCurry?
McCroy.
McCroy.
McCory?
McCroy. I'm sorry. I, unfortunately, it's always Sergeant Bobby, and that's, that's not the right thing to say, but shout out for, for the accomplishment that he did. That's, that's very good and it looks forward, it's good for the, for the future of the, of the department and everything. And if the board members haven't had an opportunity to look at the quarterly City Administrators' report, a lot of good information in there, a lot of valuable information in there, and it's, it's very, very enjoyable to be able to see that. Was used to seeing it a little more frequently, but, but I think doing it on a quarterly basis is, it probably, is probably going to work out. So very good. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Alderman Hoffman.
To everyone sitting in the first row over there, thank you for coming down and speaking. Emails are one thing, but when you come down and get in front of the microphone and we can see your faces and hear your voices, it, it helps. So I appreciate you taking the time to come down and do it. Secondly, I'm just curious, have we hired a public information officer yet or is that still out?
Okay. We have a candidate.
Next week, we're sending out an offer letter, beginning of the week, after Jamie's back from her conference.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks. And just lastly, to the Elks Lodge, the amendment that I suggested tonight was not a trust issue. I did want to make sure that I'm clarifying that to Elks Lodge. I love the Elks Lodge. The city unfortunately has been burned by some other entities in the past, and we just kind of needed to get our ducks in a row, I think. So that being said, go Blues.
Alderman Rose, Dean.
I only had one item this evening. It was also to recognize National Police Week, which begins on May 12th. And a reminder that it is not just the boys in blue. It is their support staff. It is administrative staff. It is our call center and dispatchers. It is our EMT personnel. There are a lot of individuals that basically compromise or make up the police department. And I just want to make sure that everyone that's within that realm understands it's not just about the front line, police officers. It's about everyone who's associated with the department and how much we appreciate them. And we should make a special point, especially during that week, to recognize them for their service. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Rose.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of our Public Works gentlemen that came and Stevie tonight. And truly, I think it's a wonderful idea that you would have someone below you, so to speak, to do a lot of the mundane, if that's not being critical, but other duties that takes away from your main duties, so to speak. I think it's a very good idea. And I think it'd be great to have somebody that you would choose because after all, crewmen are working with you, you know who and what they can do. And rather than bringing somebody else in, is what I'm saying. I really appreciate the immediate response, it seems like that I always get whenever I call and it seems to be the street department, Rob, and immediately responds and doesn't necessarily say it's going to be done tomorrow, but nevertheless, very positive and really appreciate it. Thank you. I had a couple of calls this past week from a couple of residents. And one of them I thought was interesting because it's something that we all know that it's a problem. And that is a person that lives in our ward, Justin. The overwhelming thousands, it seems like, of deer that are just filtrating the neighborhoods. I mean, ever since Sycamore Golf Course closed, it's even become more prevalent. And this one resident said, you just won't believe the number of deer that are in my yard and my neighbor's yard and down the street. And of course, we know driving on Dude Ranch or Dogwood Estates or Spindrift or Nichols, you have to be careful because there's always deer out crossing. I don't know if there's something with the, a city could contact the conservation department to see, because I know they deal with wildlife. I don't know what, I think what kind of control that could be done. But it's a, it's a huge, huge problem. And anyway, it was brought to my attention, which I didn't need to be brought to my attention, but I told him I'd definitely bring it up tonight at the meeting. And then, of course, another call that I had that I did speak to Rob already about it was from a resident about the condition of Dude Ranch Road. It's becoming very rough from all the heavy equipment, as we all know, with the construction going down at Nichols Point. And it's, there's many houses being built. And plus, there's potholes that just from the wear and tear of the road. Anyway, Rob said that he could see what he could do for right now to take care of the potholes. And then we'll look at the budget and redoing that road particularly. And other than that, I just want to thank them for their service. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Collins.
It's really, already been said several times, but we took our grandson out for the Easter egg hunt and he had a fantastic time. We all did. So yeah, really great job. Well, can't wait for next year. And that's about all I got.
All right. Very good. Cochran, did you have anything? Very good. I already spoke my piece, so I got nothing else to say. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rose, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. No idea. I probably will not. I can fill you in.
Nothing on the agenda for him.
Going to have a drink, Rebecca? I'm sorry, going to have a drink? So I have to meet Devon here at like 7:00 in the morning to go to some Jefferson City Training something.
Oh.
Is this official training? I'm sorry.
Lucky you.
I don't know.
I don't have a clue. I'm just kidding.
Municipal, what is, what, oh, municipal government?
She's going to the Labor.
Oh, she'll enjoy that. He's good.
I remember she came here and talked to all of us. She's going to a full day training with her. Gotcha. Cool.
It's going to be good. She's going to like it.
All right.
Yeah. He's really good.
But it is not conducive to having dirt cocktails if I have to get up that high.
Full day.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, that's good.
She gets to turn around and do it here again in June.
Right. Right. Lots of, lots of chances to learn.
I just wanted to, to you.
You have to say it.
How much does?
Well, we know.
It's a week, it's a month, it's a year.
Right.
Well, for the last seven years.
We can be happy.
As long as it's.
We used to have.
Hey, let's go.
Your car's on the ramp.
It's on a what?
It's on a ramp.
What's it get out of?
It means like you just.
Oh.
So what's the other?
Oh, I see. That's to me.
So do we need to?
Should we get that?
No, I think that's just the.
That's what I thought.
So you're right.
I think it's a bad reason.
I was very sure of it.
I was there.
No, no.